Looks like we've got all the principals here.
We're ready, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer De La Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
And City Attorney Craig Hardwick is here today with us.
Present.
Thank you. Meeting compensation disclosure, present to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. We have open session. Item number one, please.
Item number one, the city council will give staff direction to A allow Aleah Martinez to complete the Girl Scout Gold Award project at the Southgate Sports Center by replacing a standard drinking fountain with a bottle filling station and B authorizing the staff, city staff, to assist her in the project where necessary.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. With us tonight is Aleah Martinez, who can come on up right now. She is working on her gold award for the Girl Scout program and she approached me about a month and a half ago about putting in certain items at the sports center. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Greetings, council. This is okay. Greetings, council. My name is Aleah Martinez. Since the age of five, I've been an active member in my Girl Scout troop, 10905. For the last two years, I've been key club president and I'm currently the student body president of my graduating class. As a Girl Scout ambassador, I am currently working towards earning my Girl Scout Gold Award. The Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn with only 5% of its of those eligible actually achieve the award. My Gold Award addresses three main points. First, I propose to install a refillable water station in a highly trafficked area in the city. The place I had in mind was the Southgate Park in the sports center. Second, a refillable water station. Second, as the second largest park in the Sella community, southeast LA, a refillable water station would be a unique approach to Secondly, oh my gosh, okay, a refillable water station would be a unique approach to tackling the pollution crisis, plastic pollution crisis in our community. Third, a reusable water station is a sustainable approach to tackling water insecurity and water inequality within our community. Thank you for your time. All in all, I hope you can support my Gold Award project. Thank you.
Oh, come on, people. You know, first of all, let me just tell you, I'm very impressed with your presentation. You don't look nervous at all. Most people, when they come up, they kind of look, I've never spoken before before an audience and you look like a natural there. So are your parents here?
No, actually, they're jobbie of my brother at college, but I have my older sister here and my younger brother supporting me.
Okay, well, good. Well, I'm sure they'll see the video and but yeah, you did an amazing job. Absolutely. I don't know if my colleagues wanna chime in and say something, anything, speak up. They're nervous. See, you intimidated them with your Yeah, it's hard to follow that.
It's hard to follow that, but I would like to say that first off, it's a great idea. It's something that our park needs. There's a lot of areas in our park that I think we can utilize something like this, but starting at the sports center as a way for us to identify that, you know, it is something that's needed in our community and needed in that area would be a great start. I would love to eventually be able to put these in the quad, the softball quad out there, you know, where the water fountains are as well. Our girls are constantly getting water bottles and throwing them into the trash there. So this would be a great way for us to have reusable water bottles being filled there at the field. So love the idea and yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you for presenting that.
Thank you.
Now, Steve, why didn't you come up with that idea?
I gotta leave room for our great Girl Scout troops to do things.
Yes, amazing. Well, thank you. And again, I'm teasing Steve. I've known him for about 30 years and so I can tease him like that. But no, that was a great idea. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. What an excellent idea to do this. You know, I was thinking about all the pollution in the water ocean as it relates to bottled waters and so forth. And other just bottled water, the plastic all around and we're fighting nanoplastic in the ocean and we're just in our drinking water. And so I think it's about time we do this more. This is a great kickoff. I think you're gonna spin some other things that happen based on this project. So I'm really excited that it came from someone from Southgate that's taking on a leadership role like this. And it's just, so I look forward to actually filling up one of those bottles there, hopefully someday soon. So thank you for, you know, envisioning this idea and making it. Is it already happening? Or is it just a propose?
So the first step is to propose the idea to get approval to move forward with the project. So I would have to present my project to the Girl Scout Council sometime next month if we do get approved today. And then I can actually get started on like putting it into action.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Martinez, let me commend you first and foremost for having the courage to actually think outside the box. And I think that's what we need to start doing, thinking outside of the box, outside of the norm. I do see a lot of these refillable stations in a lot of universities as well as in airports. So yeah, Steve, what happened, especially in our sports center where we need to be hydrated? So I would like to know, what are the steps for any young lady who wants to aspire to get this gold recognition from the Girl Scouts? What's the process so that they have a clear understanding? Because I think you're the first and so I commend you for that. And being a female, orale, you go, girl.
Thank you.
If you can explain a little bit of that so that if somebody else is thinking of possibly doing a different project, for them to understand what are the steps? Because one thing is yes, coming before council and getting the approval, but I know you're gonna need to do a lot of work. And I know that our staff is gonna be very supportive of it, but what is the process?
Yeah, so throughout my 12 years in Girl Scouts, the main goal has been to get a chance to obtain a Girl Scout Gold Award. It's the highest honor. But the first step is obviously to kind of think of a sustainable project that'll last in my community beyond my years when I attend college. So the first step is to think of a sustainable project that touches multiple aspects of things that you want to address in your community. So one of the things I want to address is water insecurity and water inequality. So this project really helps me target those areas. The second process would be getting the approval from council. And then once you get approved, there's a minimum of 80 hours that you have to put into your project in order to obtain the award. So these hours for me, I kind of chunked into first planning my proposal. And the second is planning workshops to encourage the reusable water stations and teach them about water inequalities within our community. And the third would be other workshops to help little like daisies or younger Girl Scouts to earn different badges that also teach about, you know, getting what it means to be a Girl Scout in the Girl Scout way. And then the fourth, there's a big ceremony for Girl Scout Gold Awards that actually go through the whole process and they're able to obtain their award.
Well, I commend you for that. Thank you for the explanation. But I believe that her idea is definitely something that is sustainable, especially in the Parks and Rec area. Because everyone that's out there sometimes doesn't have a water bottle. And if there's a refillable station, they have their containers to be able to do that, not just for this project, Steve. But I think moving forward, we need to do more of this so that water is accessible to our residents, especially when they're in the park and they're out and about. So thank you for bringing that great idea, but I think we're gonna do more than that. But thank you. It's a start. Commend you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're absolutely right, Councilwoman Avalos. I just want to say congratulations and, you know, my colleagues already mentioned everything that you've been doing. But for us, tell us what you need. Tell us what you want us to for us to do so this project can go forward. If this is an action item or this is something that it's going to be brought back to the council.
I didn't help because I've met with Aleah and with her family about this. What they need as part of their approval so that she can go to the Girl Scout Council and say, this is a project that is worthy of a gold award and that the city council of the city of Southgate has approved it as such. So she does need an approval to move forward with the project. And at that point, she will begin raising funds to complete the project. So if the council wishes to help her in any manner on that side in helping her figure out how to raise the funds for that, that is part of her project.
Absolutely. No, I think it's great. And again, and I was gonna ask you, how are you planning to do your fundraising? Because, you know, you have a lot of politicians here. They're willing to give a donation. So because I think your project is wonderful. It's much needed out in the parks, especially parks. And I think that, you know, when young ladies or anybody young, I mean, come and bring this ideas, it's just amazing, you know, what you guys are thinking and bringing us those ideas. I think it's wonderful. It's a win-win. It's a win-win situation. So if there is a motion that it needs to be put out, I'll make a motion to approve this project.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just have a quick question for you as she was speaking. So do you have a design for the fountain and what is the cost?
Yeah, so the way I've broken down the cost is the purchasing of the water station, which it was like around 1,200. And then the installation for the water station was about the same price, 1,200, depending on the vendor. And then the maintenance of the actual water station, I've like researched that it's usually like the filters that you have to replace annually. So the cost, probably like $100 per filter. So looking kind of broadly, I think the main goal of my fundraising is $3,000. But I think this is a really achievable price to raise. The way I've planned to raise these funds is through the workshops I mentioned earlier, through acquiring for donations for like hydro flask or even like financial donations in terms of money to fulfill my Gold Award.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you said you were part of the key club as well?
I am.
Okay, I'm the president of the Sella Cuanas and one of the things that we
I think I remember you from the charter.
Yes. One of the things that we could do as well is have you present after you get approval from the Girl Scout Council, have you present at our Sella Cuanas meeting and that way we can maybe help sponsor some of the fundraising for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So you need additional? I think you got a consensus here. She did.
She made a motion, I will second it.
Okay, roll call. Let's make this official.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did. Councilmember Avalos.
They beat you to it.
We're too quick. We're too quick.
I should tell you, you can't see her, but your sister has like the biggest smile back there. She's so proud of you.
Roll call. Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Okay, you know, we got a lot of other certificates to go and so I know that we're kind of like looking at leaving. I don't want them to leave without the picture that we want to take with them. Okay, then you're staying. Okay, item number two.
Item number two, the city council will consider presenting certificates of appreciation, lawn signs and azalea plants to 10 awardees selected by the planning commission to be recognized for their efforts in maintaining and beautifying their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avalos, can you do the honors, please?
Thank you so much. Well, first and foremost, let me just congratulate all of the winners. And I will read the certificate, but the names will obviously be different. So this is presented by the city of Southgate City Council on behalf of its citizens of the city of Southgate in recognition of being selected as a recipient of the Home Recognition Program Award for your property. By beautifying and maintaining your property, you are raising neighborhood pride and improving the quality of life of your community. Thank you and congratulations on behalf of our current mayor, Gil Hurtado, signed August 27, 2024. So I'm gonna go ahead and begin and indicate the recipient and their address.
Were you gonna do a presentation first?
Go ahead. You know what? I'll let you take the show. How's that?
I'll let you finish.
No, it's okay. I read the certificate into the record. So now you can go ahead and do your presentation.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jose Montano and I am the special projects coordinator in community development. So before you, we're gonna extend before you this evening for the presentation of certifications, certificates of appreciation to 10 well-maintained homes nominated by local community members that's elected by the city of Southgate Planning Commission, like you previously stated. Excuse me, I get a little nervous, but
She wasn't nervous. Come on, man.
You know, I mean. So I mean
I'm trying to break the tension.
Right? Yes, thank you. So like, Councilmember Davila said, I'm sorry, Avalos, the purpose and goals and objectives of this program. The purpose of the Home Recognition Program is to recognize residents who have demonstrated a commitment to beautifying and maintaining their homes. There are many attractive homes in the city of Southgate that inspire other residents while raising community pride and spirit. The program will highlight and recognize homes motivate others to improve their homes, enhance resident neighborhoods and improve the quality of life. For Southgate residents, the following are the winners of the 2425 Home Recognition Program. So the first, so we selected 10 winners and it's two per area. For the first area is Salvador Vazquez and he's, the property address is at 108. I'm sorry. 10, I'm sorry, I don't know where my glasses. 10613 Montero Avenue in the city of Southgate. Mr. Salvador is not here, but we have his daughter, Jacqueline. And then the second winner for area one is Darnila Medina. And then for area two is Maria and Luis Vera and they're located at 3016 Ardmore Avenue. And then we have the second winner for area two, Rafael Gomez, 3277 Minnesota Avenue, Southgate, California, 9021. Not sure if he's present. And then we have area three, Jose Agriando and property address is 3308 Santana Street, Southgate, California, 9021. And the second for area three is Pedro M. Cervantes, 8932 San Carlos Avenue here in the city of Southgate. And then for area four is George Carrillo at 9208 Dorothy Avenue here in the city of Southgate. The second for area four, I'm sorry, I might mispronounce the name, Aglai? Metcado.
Aglai, perfect.
Thank you. 10223 Bryson Avenue in the city of Southgate. And then we have for area five is Claudia Felix, 11725 Oklahoma Avenue, Southgate, California. She is not here due to family problems, issues. And then last but not least, we have Jose Gardilla located at 10640 Casino Avenue here in the city of Southgate. And that concludes my presentation.
You did real well, Steve.
Thank you.
Take a lesson from the young lady. All right, well, let's go ahead and go on up and
So congratulations to all of the winners and let me just tell you, when we start to beautify our homes, we are telling everyone else, we care, we're vested, this is our community. So yes, we are definitely Southgate and thank you for that.
Yes, with other plants, yes. And we can hold one sign and then
So sweet.
All right, that was pretty exciting there. I wonder if some of those homes are for sale. They look pretty nice. Okay, where are we at? Item number three.
The city council will consider receiving and filing the list of new and promoted full-time employees hired or promoted during the month of July 2024.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Every month we do highlight people that are new to the city and those that have been promoted. And without all the many things our community would like and the services we need, we can't do anything without our staff. And that's a very important piece of how we get things done. With that, we also need to be competitive in a market where sometimes it can be hard to find good people. There's a lot of cities and a lot of other jobs. So we put our heads together to look at ways to both recruit and retain good people. And on the recruitment side, between a combined effort of our social media and communication teams from the rec department and the city manager's office, we were able to put together a recruitment video that we're showcasing in social media as well as on the website.
Hey, David, are you looking for a job?
Yes.
I am so sorry, were you ready for that?
No.
Okay, here we go. Presentation, take two.
Yeah, we're live in Hollywood here. So with that, we've put together a video with some creative thoughts from folks, including the star of the show being a member of our rec team that you'll see in a moment, but I'll pass it over to Giselle who helped kind of coordinate the effort. And she can tell us a little more about it and how it's being used for outreach.
Yes, thank you, Rob. So it's exciting to be able to collaborate with other departments. I want to thank our, you'll see the star of the video, which is Solomon, our Parks and Rec employee, and also Jerry that filmed the video and put it together. So it's nice when we can collaborate and have something to show our community and attract, like Rob said, members from other cities that may not know how great Southgate is. We posted it on our social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram and also LinkedIn that we've been using a lot to showcase the great work that we're doing. And I'm really happy to see the engagement. People are liking it or sending it to people, saving it. I even had some friends send it to me and they're like, hey, I want to work with you. Like, it looks great. So without further ado, we'll present our work for Southgate video.
Hey, David, are you looking for a job?
Yes.
How about Southgate?
Southgate? Where's that at?
Located near the 710 freeway, Southgate is a diverse, family-friendly community with outstanding city services and recreational facilities.
Sounds good, but why would I want to work there?
The city of Southgate really cares about their staff and treats everyone like family and the city council really loves the employees.
We love our employees.
We love our employees!
Well, that doesn't happen everywhere, but what else you got?
Southgate has a sports center, which includes a free gym membership, an Olympic-sized pool, par three nine-hole golf course, state-of-the-art fitness center, and a variety of classes for the entire family.
For free?
Yes, for free. And you also get bilingual pay...
Hola, ¿cómo te llamas?
And education reimbursement. We also have a deferred comp program that is matched by the city. And we also offer excellent medical insurance benefits.
Whoa, all that? But what's the culture like working there?
It's a great family work environment. A lot of our employees live in the city or have worked for the city for a long time.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yes, and did I mention you get a holiday break between Christmas and New Year's Day? And some physicians have Fridays off.
Man, that sounds amazing, where do I buy?
Simple, visit cityofsouthgate.org and click on Jobs.
That was pretty neat. And by the way, I think that was AI, because I remember doing that video. Okay, what's up, what's up next?
We'll pass it over to John to kick off the new employees. It worked, yes. Good evening, Council. Every month, we love to come and present to you, give you the introduction of some new and promoted employees. And so I believe the first department up is Community Development. And I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Meredith Alguera, for the introduction of her employee.
Thank you, good evening, Council. I'm happy to introduce our new Assistant Planner, who started last month. Her name is Yessenia Hernandez. She was actually an intern here back in 2019, right after college. She grew up in the area, went to UC San Diego, and is now our Assistant Planner. Just to give you kind of a, you know, what she's about. She got into planning, she said weirdly enough, as a child. She loved drawing floor plans, not elevations of homes that, you know, usual children would do, right? She actually drew floor plans instead of elevations. And then, you know, she also disclosed that her father had an unpermitted work. And so code enforcement came by, and that's how she was introduced to planning and her work. And she stuck to it. Luckily, she stuck to it. And so she also sews and knit, and she also collects plants for her hobbies. So I'd like to introduce Yessenia Hernandez, our new Assistant Planner.
I have a question for you, Yessenia. Are you ready? Were those plans approved? I'm sure they were, right? But your new plans were approved, right? Because they were done correctly, good. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Since I'm so close to the podium, I might as well. I want to say I'm very excited to work with all of you and to serve our amazing residents. That's it for me.
Good point, good. Welcome aboard. Okay, who's up next?
Good evening, Council. I'd like to introduce you to our newest member to Administrative Services Department, Steven Aragon. Steven joins us as a Senior Financial Analyst. He is a graduate of CSU LA and has a bachelor's degree in Business Administration with an emphasis on finance. He has a wealth of experience in budget and also in revenue, revenue projections. So Steven, so far, has hit the ground running, dealing with a couple of our projects, dealing with credit card fees, and then also the master fee schedule he's working on. So both of those are in the process, thanks to Steven. In his personal time, he enjoys reading, participating in triathlons. He's a LA Dodgers and a LA Lakers fan, so we welcome him to the team because of that. But also, he's a...
I'll remember that.
Thank you. He's also a Star Wars fan. May the force be with you, Steven. And, but most of all, he enjoys spending time with his family. So please welcome Steven Aragon.
I come here happy and willing to work for the city of Southgate. I grew up not too far from here. I hope my experience in city government can help the community here. I enjoy serving the community I work for, whether it's Burbank and I, city of Southgate. And I look forward to working with the different departments. I've already had some communication with some of the staff members, and everybody seems to show a lot of teamwork and dedication to the city. I'm very happy to be here.
Well, welcome aboard.
My turn. So Mayor, Members of the City Council, we usually save the best for last, but the best is going to be number three today. I'm pleased to introduce you to Mr. Jerry Vasquez. Is he here today? Jerry, let's, oh wow, come on, come on down. He's got the future Public Works Director with him, by the way, who's going to be leading off at Public Works here in 35 years. 35 years. Will be a Berkeley graduate, Berkeley graduate, top engineering school in the nation. So he began employment with the city in April of 2015 as a Water Distribution Operator Two. He's been promoted to the Water Quality System Lead Operator, which is pretty high up on the food chain within the water division. He'll be responsible for overseeing water quality, backflow prevention, and production programs. He currently holds a Water Treatment Operator Two and Water Distribution Three certificate. Is that a four, or is that a typo? Four, it's not a typo, a four certificate. So he's climbing. He's also enrolled in Sarito's College and working in his degree in Business Administration. And in his free time, he enjoys traveling, sports, drawing, and painting. And he is a Southgate resident, a proud new father. He won't have free time, and so he won't be able to enjoy traveling, sports, and drawing. And instead, he'll be changing diapers, which... Help me welcome Jerry, please.
Good evening, Council. Just wanted to extend my gratitude and say thank you for this opportunity. Art Cervantes, Rob Houston. Like Arturo said, I've started working here back in 2015, and the city's been nothing but good to me. I ended up purchasing a home here. Now we're raising a family. So this position as a Water Quality Specialist, I take it personal. It's something that, you know, my family, we also use this water. So I'm going to make sure that it's the cleanest for not only us, but for the residents here in Southgate. You know, Southgate just came with its 100-year mark, so there's a lot of struggles, old infrastructure. But, you know, with the support that we've been getting, you know, we just got grants and funding for new treatment facilities. All the revamps of our water tanks, infrastructure, our new SCADA that we're getting. So I want to extend again my gratitude. Thank you, guys, for supporting us, and yeah, be here for a while.
Yeah, you're not walking away without telling us who the little fella is.
So this is my son, Abel Leonel Vasquez. He was born June 4th, so he's hitting almost three months. Yeah, the traveling for now, I don't know if we can do it. A lot's been happening in my life right now, with this new position, going back to school, and the new baby. It's all blessings, you know. I heard somebody tell me once, get comfortable with being uncomfortable, because that's how you grow. So at this point, I'm growing, and I can't wait to see him grow with me.
Yeah, and thank you for what you do with our water system. And again, we've been under attack for political reasons, you've seen that. And it's sad, because I take it personal also. You, all our employees are family to us. We all respect what each and every member of our city staff, you know, from the city manager to, you know, our part-timers. And when those attacks come out, they don't realize that even though they're targeting us, they're attacking you and your family. And knowing that you live here and drink the same water, it's shameful that they would do such a thing. You know, and there's other things, right? The challenges, Arturo touched on it, didn't mention it, but a lot of people don't know about PFAS. And that's something that was man-made, it was created, put in the system, in the water system, and it's affecting everybody. We all have that in our bloodstream now. Yeah, there's nothing we can do, the little guy has it, you know? And all for the sake of money. 3M and DuPont did a mess. And I don't care how much money they have to pay, it's not enough for the damage they've done to all of us. But our city is on top of that, and we've obtained some funds. And Arturo has been phenomenal in addressing that with trying to at least remove some of that. Some of the people in the audience are probably like, what is PFAS and all that? And again, I hope they get more and more in tune as to what it is. But you guys are doing an amazing job. So I want to thank you, and I apologize for the shots that they're taking at us. They hit you, but it has nothing to do with you. You guys do a fantastic job at the Water Department. So again, thank you, and thank you to the little guy, okay?
Mayor, and I do want to confirm, Mayor, that baby Abel does drink Southgate water, and he's just perfectly healthy.
Drinks Southgate water, just like we all do. Thank you so much.
So Mr. Vasquez, I think I would probably say that we should have highlighted you in the video, because it's a true reflection of what Southgate is about. You know, when you live and work in your own city, you know, you have more of that level of prideness, because it impacts your family directly. So, you know, thank you for what you do. And yes, we are on the forefront of all of this litigation that has to do with the PFAS. And I commend our legislators at the Congress level, Nene Barragan, who actually gave us funding to be able to start cleaning up, you know, some of these wells that we were having issues. Again, thank you for what you do, and yes, water is life.
It is, essentially.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
And enjoy the baby, enjoy it, because they go quickly. I just, all right?
Yes.
Enjoy it, because I just dropped off my eldest at college, and even now, I can't believe that I have a kid in college. And next year, I'll have another one going to college, and I'll be left with just my 12-year-old daughter. And yeah, it's a blessing, man, enjoy it, enjoy it. Okay, who's next?
Mayor and City Council, so requirement from this point forward is all the police officers that we introduce are going to have to bring their children. That's a plus. I actually do want to say that we probably need to update that video and put some police officers in there, with a caveat that they're likely going to work on Fridays. Okay, they will work nights. They are working patrol, and they're going to be away from their families on Saturdays, or on holidays, and Saturdays and Sundays. But yeah, actually, I have had some... I randomly got a call from the chief over in Hermosa Beach. I saw the video, and he says that they took that, and it's inspiring them to do something over there. So it's a really good video, so credit to whoever put that together.
Giselle's been doing a good job. We've never said that, but Giselle, thank you for that.
And Leti, thank you.
And Leti, and Leti.
Teamwork, teamwork.
All right, take it away.
So I do want to introduce Brandon Romero. He was kind of the anomaly at the police academy when we were up there recruiting. He was, he put himself through the academy, had this aspiration to become a police officer, and no one picked him up. We got him up, we got him hired, and literally got patches on him a few days before graduation. We hired him on July 22nd of this year. He graduated from the Rio Hondo Police Academy, my alma mater. And he grew up in the city of Whittier. He decided to pursue a career with Southgate to have the best opportunities to work with the women and men here. And he's in the field training officer program right now. I talked to him today, the captain's talked to him today, and he's just having the time of his life, so he's living the dream. Brandon?
Good evening, Council members. I just want to say that I'm super grateful for the opportunity to work for the city of Southgate. Super excited, and I'm just great to... I'm just excited to serve the residents of Southgate.
Well, welcome aboard. Oh, I saw a lot of officers back there. I thought they were all going to come out. And, oh, but they didn't bring babies with them, I'm sorry. I don't think, Evelyn, did you hear that? You've been picked on out here, okay? Okay, so, yeah, let's, the officer just left. Can you give him an order to come back?
Manny, can you go?
Yeah, and let's bring the new employees up here for another photo. And you can bring the little one, too, that's all right. We'll consider him an intern.
Training, he's a trainee.
Training. Okay, moving right along.
Close session, Mayor.
Close session. Okay, Mr. City Manager or City Attorney?
Can I read it for the record?
Okay, yeah.
Item number one, conference with Leo Council, pending litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, 54954.9B3C. A, S. Alpizar Gal. D, Martinez versus City of Southgate. B, Yessenia Lopez-Vargas versus City of Southgate, County of Los Angeles et al. C, Eric Ardiaga versus City of Southgate. Item number two, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency representations, Rob Houston, City Manager. Employee organizations are Southgate PMMA and Southgate MEA. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, City Manager, any additional comments?
None, nothing now until we go into closed session.
Okay, if anybody in the audience wishes to address us on these items, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close that portion of it. Any emails regarding this?
No emails, Mayor.
Good, okay, we're going to excuse ourselves. We're going to go into closed session, and thank you for coming out. And if you can make an announcement at some point that we're in closed session.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to get started shortly. We're going to finish our first meeting. As soon as everybody's back, we'll do a little bit of a report. People can chime in on that if they'd like. And then we'll conclude that meeting and start the next one.
Just very briefly, I'm going to make the announcement for the Spanish translation. Si necesitan audífonos para traducción en español, están en la parte de atrás. ¿Alguien necesita traducción en español? Sí, nada más usted. Oh, they already have them. Thank you.
Okay, we're all back now. Mr. City Attorney, can you please give a report on what we just discussed?
All right, yes. We discussed three litigation matters in closed session. Took action on two of those. On the first, the Martinez litigation. That's a slip and fall case. In a motion by Mayor Hurtado, seconded by Councilmember Rios, and on a vote of five to nothing, City Council approved a settlement to resolve the case, which will be disclosed according to the Brown Act once finalized. Second item, the Vargas litigation. There was a discussion, but no action was taken on that. The third item, the Archeaga matter. That is a workers' compensation case. And in that case also, on a motion by Mayor Hurtado, seconded by Councilmember Avalos, and on a five-to-nothing vote, the City Council approved a settlement to resolve that case. And the details of that will also be disclosed according to the Brown Act once those are finalized.
Mr. City Manager, you want to add anything else?
We had discussions on...
I can do that. Yeah, okay. On the labor negotiations, we don't always comment on them. But at this point, Council gave direction for the next phase in our labor negotiations for the MVA and PMMA group. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we had those items in closed session. If anybody wants to address us on those items, please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, and close that audience portion. And we had no emails on that, is that correct?
None, Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Okay, say when we can start the meeting.
Ready, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation by Pastor Ángel Solorsano of Centro Cristiano Rios de Agua Viva, and the Pledge of Allegiance by your deep place. Okay.
We come before you, and we thank you for the opportunity that you give us today to gather together and pray. What a wonderful thing that we still have a city that believes in you and believes in prayer. So I pray that you be with us today. I pray, and I thank you, Lord, for the wonderful city of Southgate. I thank you, Lord, for the council members, mayor, council members, and I thank you for the wonderful job that they're doing. Today, they're going to be discussing an agenda, some resolutions, amendments, purchases, contracts that they need to make decisions on. I pray, Lord, that your wisdom that overpasses all understanding be with them. Help them make the right decisions, help them take the right direction. And I pray the guidance of God over their lives. Lord, we thank you for everything that you are doing in this city, and I thank you, Lord, for your peace that is in this place. And as your word says, I quoted, I will quote it, "The peace of God that overpasses all understanding may fill our hearts." And, Lord, we pray all this in the mighty name of Jesus, and we'll say, amen. Thank you.
If I can have everyone join me in the pledge. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Craig Hardwick is here today.
Present.
Thank you. Meeting compensation disclosure, pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. We don't have any public hearings today, but this is the opportunity for comments from the audience. If anybody in the audience would like to address us on any item that's not on the agenda, please step forward, state your name, address for the record, and reminder that you have three minutes, and we don't go into back and forth. So some people ask a question, and then we're just looking at you, and why aren't you answering the question? So just want to make sure that's clear. Okay? Thank you.
Must be my turn.
Yes, sir, it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council management, of course. I have the honor to be here this evening to make a request of the City Council. In 2012, ten California cities had become Purple Heart Cities by proclamation. Then Governor Jerry Brown was so moved by the display of patriotism, he wrote a proclamation making California the first state in the nation to be a Purple Heart State. This proclamation is in recognition of the sacrifices of our men and women who have been wounded or killed in the line of duty. I am asking the city of Southgate to pass a proclamation making Southgate a Purple Heart Cities. Thus far, we have Downey, Santa Fe Springs, Bellflower, Lakewood. All of these are currently becoming Purple Heart States. As part of that, I'm honored to give this to, for the mayor's office. It reads, "Some gave all, all gave some, killed in action, wounded in action." So this service for you, for your office.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we never got your name.
Paul Jones?
Paul Jones.
You mean to tell me all this time I didn't actually give my name?
That's okay. Paul Jones. That's an easy one to remember.
I know, I know, I know. And I had lunch with a friend.
Is there a John in there somewhere? John Paul Jones?
John, I wish, I wish, but unfortunately, no.
Well, thank you so much. We'll put it on display here somewhere in the hallway.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, see no one step forward? Okay, if you're going to speak, it'd be, because I get confused if I don't see people coming up. So if you can line up out here on the side, it'd be amazing. Okay, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Hurtado, council members, and Southgate City staff. My name is Julie Hernandez Chan, and tonight I am representing both Hollydale and Leland R. Weaver Libraries. We would like to invite the youth in our community to participate in our 45th Annual L.A. County Library Bookmark Contest to encourage a love of books and reading while also promoting creativity, artistic expression, and community engagement. Participants may compete in the following grade categories: kindergarten through grade two, grade three through five, grade six through eight, and grade nine through 12. Completed entry forms can be dropped off at individual library locations, sent in by mail, or submitted digitally via link on the library's website, lacountylibrary.org. The deadline for entry is October 5th. The winning bookmarks from each library will be shared with the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, who will select winners that will reside in their district from each category. Winners selected by the Board of Supervisors will be recognized by the board in the spring of 2025. Thank you so much for your support of literacy and lifelong learning in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Estoy aquí...
I am here tonight.
...en apoyo al señor Rodrigo Ochoa.
In support of Mr. Rico Ochoa?
Quien trabaja para la sección ocho.
Who works for section eight?
Es, me he dado cuenta que piensan despedirlo.
I have found out that he may be terminated?
Y creo que eso es una injusticia.
And I think that's not fair?
Es una persona trabajadora...
He's a hard worker?
Honest.
Honest?
Respectuosa.
Respectful?
Quien ayuda a muchas personas en sección ocho.
Who also helps a lot of people that have section eight?
Tanto a los dueños de unidades como a los residentes.
Property owners just as well as tenants?
Ojalá, y se den cuenta lo que van a hacer.
I hope that you know what you're doing?
Muchas gracias, mi nombre es Mayra Rodriguez. Buenas noches.
My name is Mayra Rodriguez. Thank you. Good night.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Joanna Guerrero.
Good evening, my name is Joanna Guerrero.
Y estoy aquí porque soy primera vez participante en esto.
I am here tonight, and I am here for the very first time.
Gracias al señor Ochoa.
Thank you, thanks to Mr. Ochoa.
Y le agradezco porque ha cambiado mi familia.
I am so grateful because he has changed everything for my family.
Es una de las personas que me escuchó cuando yo tenía necesidad.
He's one of the only people, si me da pausa, por favor? He's one of the only people that listen to me when I had the need?
Y le agradezco infinitamente a él...
I will always be grateful to him?
...por mis hijos.
For me and my kids.
Les pregunto, me tengo que preocupar por algo?
I'm asking you, should I be worried about something?
Tiene algo él que ustedes le han encontrado mal?
Have you found that he has something wrong?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. My name is Samantha Hernandez. I'm here as well to talk about Mr. Ochoa. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to come and be here today. I, it's kind of upsetting to hear about Mr. Ochoa being let go because you can tell it's more about, it's more of a, more than a job to him, and more about caring for the people and like their, their well-being and their health. And we're, me and my family are grateful as well for Mr. Ochoa for being able to make sure that we live in a healthy and livable space. And, sorry, it's nerve-wracking being up here.
You're doing fine.
From my experience with Mr. Ochoa and my family's perspective, it's always, you could tell with Mr. Ochoa, it's more about helping the residents than just a job to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Asger Chavez.
Good evening, my name is Asger Chavez.
En un edificio de gente mayor de 55 años...
I live in a building that's for people over 55 years old?
El año pasado se presentó el señor Ochoa...
Last year, Mr. Ochoa came to our building?
Fue la primera vez que lo conocí.
That was the first time I met him?
Volvió a llegar...
He came again?
...a supervisarlo, y habían muchas cosas que no corregían de mi apartamento.
He found that there were many issues that were not being fixed?
Hasta este año, que él tomó fotografías y se dedicó mucho...
Until this year that he took a lot of photographs, and he dedicated a lot of his time?
Muy detallista, tomó fotografías...
He was very detailed, took a lot of pictures?
Y voy a lograr que reparen muchos problemas que hay en mi apartamento.
And I will now be able to get results by them fixing a lot of the items that were not working properly?
Pienso que es una persona muy dedicada a su trabajo.
I think he's a very dedicated person to his job?
Sería perder a una buena persona, un buen personal que ustedes tienen.
It would be sad to see that you lose a very good employee that you now have.
Así que les suplico que lo dejen.
I ask you please to keep him.
Gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you. Good evening.
Gracias.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Elvira Luján.
My name is Elvira Luján.
Y vengo, este, a hablar acerca del señor Ochoa.
I am here to speak also about Mr. Ochoa.
Viví por siete años...
I lived for seven years.
...en Senior Villa.
In Senior Villa?
Todos esos siete años fue problema, cada que llovía se mojaba mi apartamento, mi alfombra...
For all those seven years, we had many problems, including a lot of leakage when it rained?
Y nunca lo reparaba, nunca lo arreglaba.
And they would never repair that?
Hasta que llegó el señor Ochoa en diciembre...
Until Mr. Ochoa came in December?
Y le dije el problema que tenía...
I told him the main problem we had?
Chequeó la alfombra, la levantó, y estaba toda podrida.
He lifted our carpet and saw that it was all soiled and molded?
Le tomó fotos...
He took pictures?
Y me dijo, su vida peligra.
And he told me you were at risk? Your life is at risk?
Usted ya no puede seguir viviendo aquí si no le van a reparar esta alfombra.
You cannot continue living here if they're not going to repair this carpet?
Entonces, este, estuvieron mandando personas a arreglar a la...
They continued sending us people to repair all of that?
Y no quedó bien el problema, no se, no se arregló.
It wasn't fixed properly?
Entonces, este, tuve que moverme de apartamento, y el señor Ochoa me ayudó mucho.
I then had to move to a different apartment, and Mr. Ochoa also helped me with that move?
Y vengo pues a hablar acerca de él, es un trabajador excelente.
So I am here to support him and to let you know he's an excellent worker?
Una persona que nos ayuda mucho.
He's a person that helps us a lot?
Y quisiera pedirles de favor que lo dejaran.
I would like to ask you, please, keep him?
Le dejaran su trabajo.
Let him do his job?
Es una persona que vale la pena.
He is very worth it.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
Saludos.
Good night.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, City Council, many of you is John DeJesus Casares, and I speak for my late mother, Delia D. Casares. My mother passed away last year on December 25th, 2023. My parents are from, we're from Texas. My parents came here, well, not me, I was born here. My parents came from Texas in 1960. Speaking of Governor Brown too, my dad worked at Fox 11, had a big opportunity here for the city of Southgate and for the city of L.A. My parents worked really hard. Father passed when I was 11. We were low income, me and my mother. Me and my mom went through some rough times. Look, we got section eight. I graduated high school in 2001. My mother was diagnosed with cancer in forma, so I took care of her, and I took the initiative because I'm certified CNA. I had to quit school for two years because I had to take care of my mother because my three sisters couldn't do that. The reason why I'm here is for Ochoa. And the reason why I'm speaking for him is because since we've been in section eight, and I moved, we moved to a two-bedroom right here on 10356 California Avenue on California and Tenaya, we had multiple, two different owners. The apartment is in bad condition. I always wanted to come and say something, but my mother always hold me back because she was afraid of losing her section eight. You know how that goes. A lot of these women are very scared to speak up or say something, but not today. And they always had that, they wanted to speak up, but they couldn't because they were afraid that they're going to lose their section eight if they speak up on something. But I'm speaking on their behalf. Now, when my mother passed away last year, we had a heating problem in my apartment. I told the manager multiple times. I reported to section eight. They came to my house, and they checked the meter. They fixed the meter. Then he goes away, passed and everything, bill passed. Okay, your heater's okay. But the next day or two, it wouldn't work. I would make a complaint again, same problem. So my mom didn't have a heater for a year and a half. Ochoa came in in December and saw my heater and said, "Your mom is really sick." She was in dialysis for six years. Two years of that, the heater was not fixed. Plumbing problems too. My friend will come in, he's a plumber, he would send a camera in there and say, "Hey, man, these, your owner needs to buy new pipes. They're really bad." Owner wouldn't do nothing about it because he's always complaining that everything's too expensive. But like I tell him, that's not my problem. You're the owner, you need to take care of what you're owning. You know, everything's expensive. That's no excuse. So when Ochoa came in, the last week before my mom passed away, he fixed the heater for my mom. But then again, my mom passed away. The week he came in, thank God, he came in and did that, a week later, my mom passed away. So it was kind of too late, which to me was wrong. There's a lot of things that I want to complain about too, but I'm just saying one because it's for my mother, and I'm saying for her behalf. I have her death certificate right here. I could tell you what she passed away from, and I'm not going to lie about that. So I'm here for Ochoa because I have people from section eight that just come and go, a lot of recognition, friends of friends or whatever, hire or whatever. There's always somebody that is related to somebody here. There's never somebody, someone new. It's always someone in the city of Southgate that are helping each other out, and that's what I kind of see.
See if you can wrap it up in 10 more seconds or so. We do have three-minute limit.
I just wanted to let you know that I'm complaining about the situation, about section eight, but I'm fighting for Ochoa because since he came in here, that one month, he made my owner fix the heater and other floor problems too. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Elva Speaker.
My name is Elva Speaker.
Yo estoy aquí apoyando al señor Ochoa...
I am also here supporting Mr. Ochoa.
Mi esposo trabajo para la ciudad de Southgate 33 años.
My husband worked for the city of Southgate for 33 years?
Sin pedir ni siquiera un día por enfermedad.
Without even asking for one day for sick leave?
Él ya, este, pasó a mejor vida y...
He's already passed to a better life?
El señor Ochoa me ha ayudado mucho, me ha estado ayudando...
Mr. Ochoa has been helping me a lot?
Rentar las propiedades a las personas necesitadas.
To rent out my properties to people who need it?
Yo miro en ese señor Ochoa, que él no solo está en la ciudad por dinero...
I see that Mr. Ochoa is not working for the city only for the money?
Sino también porque tiene pasión...
Also because he has the passion to help people?
...para ayudar a la ciudad de Southgate, a las personas...
The city of Southgate and the people?
...que tenemos necesidad.
That really need it.
Y como esas personas necesitamos muchas.
And like him, we need a lot more people.
Ustedes decidan lo que ustedes gusten, pero...
You may decide whatever you want?
No hay personas como el señor Ochoa.
There was not a lot of people like Mr. Ochoa?
Que haya tantas para ayudar a personas...
To help people?
...indefensas que no pueden defender...
That cannot defend themselves?
Que no las escucha la gente...
Are not being heard?
Por favor, hagamos más por nuestra ciudad de Southgate.
Let's do more for our city of Southgate?
Que esto vea mucho mejor.
That our lives become better?
Yo se los pido en el nombre de nuestro Señor Jesucristo.
I ask you please, in the name of God?
Y oro por la ciudad de Southgate y por los líderes.
And I pray always for city of Southgate and all its leaders.
Dios me lo bendiga.
All of you. May God bless you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Blanca García.
Good evening, my name is Blanca García.
Y vengo a pedir que por favor vean bien el señor Ochoa, es una gran persona.
I am asking, please, to think very well your decision.
Yo tengo 30 años viviendo en ese apartamento.
Señora, por favor, déme pausa. Señor, por favor, denme pausa.
Para que traduzca.
Ahora sí.
Okay, veo, tengo 30 años viviendo en esos apartamentos.
I've been living in some apartments for 30 years.
Y nunca he arreglado ese apartamento.
And no one would fix it?
Y en diciembre cuando llegó el señor Ochoa y me revisó y me vio las condiciones.
Again, in December, when Mr. Ochoa came and he saw what the problems were.
Y me vio las condiciones, cómo vivía.
And when he saw the conditions that I was living under?
Gracias a Dios me lo cambiaron, pero ahorita también el dueño nos ha corrido.
Thank God that back then, the repairs were done, but now we've been evicted?
Ya digo, pónganse las manos en el pecho y vean que el señor Ochoa es un gran trabajador.
Please put your hand on your heart and see that Mr. Ochoa has been a hard worker.
Vean ustedes lo más bien para que tengamos una mejor vivienda y un buen trabajador como el señor Rodrigo Ochoa.
So that we have better living conditions.
Y Alan también, que llega a revisar el señor Alan. Y las muchachas que están allí excelentes, ahorita, por favor, en sus manos pongan a la gente que está ahorita ayudando.
It's in your hands that you make the right decision.
A todos los que estamos aquí.
He's been helping everyone that are in Section 8.
Pero gracias a Dios, Diosito nos puso ahorita gente buena.
But thank God that we have been given good people like him.
Los dejo en sus manos, en el nombre de Dios. Gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you and good night.
Good evening, my name is Eva Mendoza, and I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't like to talk in front of people. Um, I recently received my Section 8 voucher, thanks to Mr. Ochoa, this was in June. And the only reason why I received it was because I came out here before work and I explained to him how I was denied. Um, when I'm a full-time student, I'm a single mother, I'm getting help. And the J I came in, he immediately was like, "Hey, like, give me your information, I'll look into it." Um, ever since that day, I, the next day, I received a call saying, "Hey, you did get your voucher." Um, and from that day, he has been helping me and today I received my apartment. Uh, I finally signed my lease and I can honestly say that he's been the only person that has helped me. So I'm vouching for him because I can see that he did it from the heart, so, please keep him. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I'm closing the audience portion, do you have any emails, Madam City Clerk?
I do, Mayor. I have, uh, three emails. One is from Brenda Moran. And she states that I am writing to express my concern about the recent decision to let Mr. Ochoa go. I find this action unjust and unprofessional. Mr. Ochoa has been instrumental in improving my and my mother's living conditions through the Section 8 housing program. He addressed severe issues including outdated carpeting, broken boiler, leaking windows. His support was crucial in preventing unjust eviction and ensuring our safety and stability. I'm worried about how this departure will affect the support and advocacy available to our families in need. Mr. Ochoa's contribution has been significant and it's disheartening to see them dismissed. Please find the attached pictures so that you can reference, thank you for your attention. And if anyone would like to see, I have those pictures available, I did email them to all of you for the record. Um, I also received another email from, um, I have Patrick Pearson, JPP Investment LLC. As a property owner who rents in Southgate, uh, how's, I'm sorry, Southgate Housing Households. I would like to compliment Rodrigo Ochoa, Housing Inspector Supervisor, and the new way how the housing, Section 8 Housing Department is run. He is an absolute pleasure to work with. Mr. Ochoa answered several questions I didn't know the answers to and was able to give me the valuable guidance I needed. Knowledgeable and courteous staff like Mr. Ochoa cannot be overvalued. Uh, his attitude is a far cry from the historical housing inspector, um, supervisor and code-compliant officers I have dealt with in the past. The new housing team has changed the way they treat our tenants and us as property owners also. Employees such as Mr. Ochoa are credit to the city. I would willingly stand in line just to work with him. He cheerfully helps me whenever I need. He is friendly and remembers housing clients' names. Uh, what a treat it is to deal with him. Please continue with value, continue with value employees like Mr. Ochoa and his team. If possible, hire him into the city of Southgate as he has changed lives here. And that is, thank you from Mr. Patrick Pearson. And then I also have one from Mr. Mario Dominguez. He would like to express his dissatisfaction with the August 21st Special City Council meeting. He feels it is purely, it was purely informational and was necessary for the public to attend in person. He states he would have simply watched it on YouTube instead. While the present and presentation and comments were useful, there was no need for the public to be present. He also was disappointed that there was no direction given to the general plan or the traffic study. The city council didn't discuss or debate these matters, leaving issues unresolved and knowing the lack of leadership. Additionally, he is requesting you provide an update on the parking lot on Amazon premises south of the rail facility. It was expected to be completed in March, April 2024, but there's been no progress. When will it be finished, this year or next? If our city can't handle this, how would we manage to handle larger developments? Uh, he states our city needs to improve its management of big businesses, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go around the room and let's start off. You have another presentation, Mr. Cervantes?
Mayor, I'm glad to say that I do.
Okay, do you have a comment? Yeah, when it gets to the, when it gets to human resources, he'll go, he's going to respond. So just to understand, normally, when people come to the audience and speak on items that are not on the agenda, we can't get into a back and forth because it's not agendized, it's a violation of law. But we do give a brief response and the way we do it is as we go around the room, when it gets to the department heads, he will address it, so we're not going to ignore you and you're familiar with the process, I guess he just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. So I'm explaining that to you now, we're not ignoring you. Okay, Mr. Cervantes, you're up.
Yeah, Mayor, tonight I'm going to go over some of our projects that are in some phase of construction. The first one here is, I'm pleased to report that we've started construction on the Tweedy Mall Complete Streets project as of yesterday. This is going to be an aggressive project in terms of schedules, that'll be completed within seven months. It's going to occur in a heavily transited business community with pedestrians, vehicles and what have you. So we are expecting some level of inconvenience, some level of not understanding construction activities. And so we'll be working with the general public and the businesses to make sure that we try to figure out how to build this particular project in a way that accommodates the businesses and the general, and the customers of that area. And these are pictures of our groundbreaking ceremony yesterday and thank you all for participating. Uh, next slide, please. I wanted to provide an update on our three major park improvement projects. We've made quite some progress. The Holadele Community Park Renovation Project is in the construction phase, but was put on hold some time ago. We've since been working with the Shurty Company, we're now getting ready to award a construction contract and we're on schedule to start construction on September 16th and complete it by the end of December. The Circle Park Renovation Project, we're also getting ready to start construction on that project now that a contract has been awarded and we're looking to start construction on September 16th as well and complete construction on March 31st. The Urban Orchard Project has been one that's been on hold for quite some time. I believe we've made as much progress as possible. We're now just waiting for final review by the county of the last application for permitting that we submitted. And we're planning to, we're hoping to advertise construction today, I heard from staff that was not possible, but it looks like we'll be advertising construction this week for sure. Um, and once, you know, I do want to say that when we start construction or that date is still uncertain. It's, we're going to go out too bit as we're waiting for the county, but we won't be able to start construction until we get county approval, which their timeline is still uncertain. Uh, next slide.
Arturo, if you can, don't mind going back, I think we need to make a date correction. So if we're starting September 16, 2024, we're ending it March 31st, 2025, right?
Yes, I unfortunately corrected that typo after I submitted this to the city clerk, so.
Just want to make sure because it's not completed, we're already in August.
2025, yes, good catch, I appreciate that, thank you. Yes, March 31st of 2025, thank you. And then the last slide here is just an update on our two major corridor projects on Garfield Avenue and Long Beach Boulevard. We're in the final phases of construction of both. On the Garfield Avenue Complete Streets Project, we're just wrapping up the striping of the roadway, which is scheduled to be completed this week and with that, the project will be done. I will say that we have some grant money left over. We're going to be talking to the city manager about using that grant money to fix additional sidewalk work. So there may be another small change order issued to do additional sidewalk work so that we don't have to return the money to the grant agency. So that will occur sometime after next week. And then on the Long Beach Boulevard Complete Streets Project, we're also at the tail end of that project. We're now wrapping up completion of the landscaping and striping, which I understand from staff should be completed next week. So after that, it's just miscellaneous punchless items, but the projects will look largely completed and be in full use as of next week. I do want to mention that we're still evaluating the, um, the designs for the ADA ramps and the use of the cobblestone. I do want to mention also that the cobblestone and everything is to standard. We do understand that the selection of the designs and their approach have public concerns and create that potential for tripping if someone's not paying attention, regardless of it being to standard. So we are looking at a different way to design those and possibly reconstruct those and that's still under review, so that'll come at some point in time in the future, thank you.
You talked about the parks already, Steve, so we're going to skip your part, I'm just kidding. Uh, go ahead, Steve, your turn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, wow, it's already Labor Day weekend coming up. Just note that the Parks and Recreation Department, most of the buildings will be closed on that day for Labor Day. Uh, also, the department has begun registration for all the fall classes and activities. Uh, we've had lines already, so trips, activities, kids programs, swimming, all available at this time. So we encourage everyone to sign up. And then the last part is, is that September 25th, the city of Southgate is lucky enough to be able to host the LA Philharmonic as part of the city's program for the year. It's a great cultural event for the city. Uh, we are, the doors on that day will open at 6:00 AM, the concert itself will start at 7:00. Doors will open at 6:00 PM. Maybe we want to open earlier. And the concert itself will start at 7:00 PM. And we expect a full house, we've been receiving many phone calls and other things from it. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Meredith.
Yes, good evening, Council. I just wanted to remind everyone that we have our CAC meeting tomorrow night. I believe we finally have a quorum, so it will happen tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. And then just to respond to your question earlier, Mr. Mayor, people are actually allowed to join more than one commission. We've done the research and that was the findings from our city clerk. And then we'll also be providing you with an updated list of all the current members of commissions shortly, thank you.
Thank you. Wendy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to remind residents and business owners that July 1st, we did initiate the sewer rate increase, so there may be some questions on the water bill. So wanted to remind that they can contact the customer service billing counter for any billing questions. The number would be 323-563-9586. Or you also can email us at customerhelp@sogate.org.
Thank you, John. And he's going to cover the personnel matter that was addressed, so.
Correct, yes, but I would like to let Council know that we have a lot of exciting job opportunities. So anybody's interested in any jobs at the city of Southgate, please go to cityofsouthgate.org and hit on the, hit on the jobs tab. But we have a wide variety. So in administrative services, we're looking for a budget and finance manager. In community development, we have two good positions in planning. We have an associate planner and the planning manager positions. Um, in the PD, we're looking for a civilian custody officer, which is a jailer. These are all full-time positions. Public Works is looking for an assistant engineer, an electrician, one or two, a journey electrician, and a facilities maintenance tech, one or two, as well as a public works senior management analyst in engineering. And last but not least, Parks and Rec have some good part-time positions. They have lifeguard, rec leader two in grounds, rec leader three. And just recently posted, within about a couple hours, we are also looking for a full-time transit services coordinator, so that's hot off the presses. With that, I will pass it over to the chief of police.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Next Saturday, I will be one of the keynote speakers with Sheriff Luna at the Contract Cities Conference. Some, we're going to be talking about some very current events, Proposition 36, that's on the ballot in November. We're going to talk about the coordinated effort between the Grants Pass Supreme Court ruling. And then I'll be updating the elected officials on the PARP procedures that was so controversial early in the years. Um, I will say that the numbers are extremely encouraging. There's a tool now available on the LA County Courts website that you can actually access to see the success of the pre-arrangement release procedures. Uh, and then, but yeah, that's coming up next week. Also, I got a chance to talk to Marcel Rodarte today, so say a prayer for Jorge Morales, who went through some pretty invasive surgery, still in the hospital, but we send our best wishes to him. And then finally, I would ask that perhaps we can adjourn this meeting in memory of San Diego Police Officer Austin Makatar, who was killed last night in a very tragic incident. Uh, they were pursuing a suspect and he was killed in a car crash. So I have a good friend of mine who's the deputy chief in San Diego. I spoke to him earlier and just sent our regards from Southgate. And it's, he says that the police department's devastated, the family's devastated. So you can only imagine the pain that that department's going through. We don't lose a lot of police officers in the line of duty in California, but we actually feel it even when it's out of the county, so if we can do that, that would be greatly appreciated.
That will be the order, yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, and just in regards to the comments made regarding the Section 8 tenants, which is a very important program for the city. I think what you've witnessed since the late part of last year, beginning of this year, is both the assistance we received from Mr. Ochoa, but also a change in our administration and our housing department in being more aggressive in the inspection process, which I think is a great change. And really, that program effort has changed from what used to happen at the city. And so there's an inspection philosophy that carries on regardless of who the employee is that is doing the inspection. The direction given now for housing is to go into the building, into the rooms, not just from the doorway. Talk to the landlords, address the issues, make the places safe. So that is an encouraging change from how the housing department's being handled. Um, I think we're making some good progress in a lot of parts of housing where we're improving. And so I appreciate that effort. We, Mr. Ochoa is just a contract person, so not a city staff person. We are in the process of hiring two permanent housing inspectors. So we'll have regular staff, it'll be long-term people that will get hired in through recruitment process very shortly. Uh, but in the interim, we have contract staff that are filling in and the anticipation is anyone else coming into those roles will have a similar attitude and a similar effort level as Mr. Ochoa did to make sure that you're being looked after. And we appreciate you not being afraid to bring up to any of our housing staff if you're concerned about your conditions. We don't want you to feel scared that there'll be penalties against you regardless of who you're working with.
you're working with. Our current staff, our current director, Meredith here, or, or Carol, our housing manager, are all here to help, not to create fear. So I want you to know that, uh, the city's here to help and we will continue to provide that help. And, um, in the case of a contract staff person, we might be changing out. You don't have to feel like you'll be left behind. Uh, and we appreciate you feeling safe to come here, even to talk to us. And, uh, we want to work together with you in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, also, you might want to touch on that, uh, the council is not in the hiring or firing or disciplinary portion of it. We're policymakers, but we're not involved in the personnel.
Oh, sure. Yeah. It, just to clarify, if there is any administrative decisions that get made for staff members or contractors coming or going, that would be, um, our administrat- our staff level, our department directors, or myself in some cases as the city manager. And the council, um, hires myself and I hire the department directors to do that. So if you are concerned about a personnel issue like you did coming here, um, it would be myself or my department directors that would do it. And the council, uh, doesn't get involved in that level. Just to clarify.
Yeah. And, and I'll just say that we do appreciate that, um, you come and tell us because we do want to know when someone is doing a, a, a very good job. And we also want to know when they're not doing a good job. And our only involvement is going to the, uh, city manager and letting them know, uh, about the issues. Mayor? Yeah? May I speak on this issue?
Sure.
It's important. Uh, I'm really touched by the audience. Me ha tocado corazón la gente que vino ahora con este asunto. Uh, I'm, I'm, and I'm, bienvenidos a la ciudad de Southgate, residentes. I'm really happy for the people that are here. Uh, I, I don't understand. I'm a little confused. I mean, uh, we're letting a person that was doing an exemplary job and, and he's no longer going to be with us. He's no longer, and we're going to hire other regular people? That doesn't sound right to me. Um, that, uh, you know, that really does, does, it, 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 you know, th- this person hasn't been here very long and already is making a difference. And it just, this is so important, helping people that are the most needy in our community. And, 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 and we're, and we're not, and, and we're letting this person go. I, I really have an issue with that. Um, and I know we're not supposed to be making a decision, but I think it's, we have an important role as representatives of the community. When we have an employee that is doing an outstanding job and addressing the concerns that, that we've heard from the residents here before, uh, as far as the housing and, and, and not, and we're letting the person go? It's just unfounded. Uh, you know, uh, I, I met people that are now, we opened the Section Eight. I've been here on the council seven years. I remember, I don't remember seeing that many applications come in and people getting their places, their homes, addressing the issues. I think these are important issues. And, and, uh, I'm really saddened by the fact that, uh, you know, Labor Day is, is coming, right? And we have a person that's doing his job and simply, and we're, we let him go and we're not even concerned. If we are gonna, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna open these positions, I think Rodrigo should, Mr. Ochoa, I think he should have an opportunity to apply. I mean, uh, so, I mean, this is where, why, why am I here? I think I'm here because of what's going on. This is the kind of issues we have to represent. These are important issues, fundamental issues. And if we just let it go by, I think we're missing an opportunity to make a, continue to make a difference in our community and help people that are the most needy in our community. So, um, you know, and I want to hear from staff, uh, or whoever. I mean, this person was let go as to, I know that, just give us some context with why we're letting a, a person like this go.
Mr. Uh, Councilmember Rios? Yeah.
Hang on, let me say something real quick. Uh, you know, we all feel the same, but the law prohibits us from engaging in this. And I want to caution my colleague, as passionate as he is, we all are, but we are prohibited from law, by law, to engage in this, in this conversation publicly. And I, and he knows that. I'm concerned and I hope the attorney will kind of guide us and, and.
First of all, I just want to tell the members of Section Eight, thank you for taking the time to do your civic duty and advocating for an individual that changed your quality of life. I appreciate you coming in, but I would concur, this is a personnel issue. And if I'm not mistaken, like the city manager indicated, we hired a company to come in and assist us in a certain area, specifically community development and in housing. He came in and he filled in that void. And I appreciate the work that he has done. We now have positions that are open. If he wishes to apply, he will be, you know, just like any other employee, go through the process, go through a vetting, and then we take it from there. But again, I humbly thank you for coming in. I appreciate you voicing everything that he did to change your quality of life. And I believe, you know, those are the employees that we need to start looking at to make sure that, you know, the services are provided to our residents. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, councilmembers. We, we probably should.
Yes.
Move back to the agendized items at this point.
And we apologize for that. Yeah. We apologize for that, but, uh, Mr. Attorney, can you explain so we don't violate the law here?
Yeah. And there's a number of reasons, primarily as you've discussed, we, we can't really engage in prolonged discussions and certainly can't take any actions on non-agendized items. And as you pointed out, it's not city council's job to, to, to hire and discharge and enter into contracts. And it's generally not something that is discussed in open section.
Mr. City Manager, you want to add something? I stopped there earlier.
Um, no, that's fine. I think if, um, Councilmember Rios wants to have a offline discussion in a little more detail, I can provide a little additional information that might be helpful. But at this point, I think we should move on as per the city attorney's guidance. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Mr. City Treasurer?
No new items to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have to say that it's been pretty quiet at City Clerk's office. Um, I'm trying to schedule and coordinate a meet and greet for all the qualified candidates, um, coming up in September. Um, just trying to coordinate with the city manager, city attorney, and all of the department directors, uh, so that we can get together. Um, and that's basically what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. Rios first because I know he wanted to say something. Go, go first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody's here. Uh, I want to wish everybody a, a good, uh, Labor Day weekend. And, uh, I'm real pleased with, uh, you coming forward and continue to come forward. It's important. If you think this is an important issue, keep make, pressing on it because it's, if you think it's important. Um, and I just want to wish everybody a great Labor Day.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Steve, I just wanted to also add to the events at the park. Uh, is there going to be a golf tournament this, uh, weekend on September 1st?
There is a golf tournament planned. I do not know what the registration numbers are for it.
Okay. And, and is it still just, uh, going online, registering through the?
Yes, it is.
So, and I think it's, uh, scheduled for September 1st? Awesome. All right. Thank you. Um, and then, uh, Arturo, I had a question. I, I know I've been reached out by a few residents regarding, uh, the streetlights on Anet and Duane area. I know there's been some issues with Southern California Edison, that, that location's actually been down for some time. Do we have any updates from, uh, Southern California Edison that we can report to our residents?
I, I do want to mention firstly that, uh, there are some streetlight, uh, i- issues that we're experiencing. Some are Southern California Edison and some are city. In the case where we have these Southern California Edison issues, the updates that are available to us as a city are the same updates that are available to the residents as well. There's a website that residents could go on to every time there is some kind of outage. That website provides the latest updates that Southern California Edison has for any particular outage. Uh, I don't know the update on that, but I can certainly go on the website tomorrow and provide an update.
Yeah. I think if we can find, uh, where the, what their updates are and, you know, where they're at. And, um, I, I understand that it's not, it's not always our job to do, you know, to notify the residents of issues that they're having. But if we can get that information out in any way, uh, I, I would appreciate it. I think our residents would appreciate it as well.
Absolutely. I'll work with Giselle to try to get the word out in terms of having that link shared with everyone.
All right. Thank you. And I, I just want to say that, you know, we're, we're getting ready to start, uh, our softball season at the Southgate Junior Athletic Association, um, the, the, and I'm very excited. I was talked into coaching again. Um, you know, my daughter said, hey, you still have to coach me. You can't, can't push me along to another coach. So, uh, I'll be out there, uh, again and looking forward to, to those residents, uh, and, and those young ladies being out there. Uh, and then I would also just like to, uh, remind everybody that, you know, this weekend we're going to have, uh, our Labor Day weekend. It's our last holiday of the summer. Uh, let's be safe out there. Let's, uh, let's make sure that we're not drinking and driving. Let's make sure we're celebrating respectfully and, uh, in a, in a safe way. And I hope everybody has a great and safe, uh, Labor Day. And wish you guys all great barbecues.
Madam Councilwoman?
Thank you. Um, again, thank you to all the audiences still here, those that are on, um, YouTube. Thank you for watching. Um, we did the groundbreaking of the Tweedy Mile, um, this week, and I think it went really well. So definitely to our residents, be mindful of the signs. Try to use the opposite side if you see that they're working on one side. Um, when the construction workers are out there, they're doing their job. Um, Arturo, an issue did come up, and that's something that I would like to hear from you and see if that was even in the contract. When they are out there breaking concrete, are they supposed to be using water to reduce the dust particles that are out there? Um, I've gotten a couple of complaints from some residents saying, hey, there's a lot of dust. Should there be a lot of dust? I will check in.
Councilmember, I did hear that complaint today. I believe I received it from the city manager. And I have informed, uh, staff about that particular issue. There, as part of the contract, there is a requirement to have dust control. When that's an issue, contractors require to, uh, address that. So that's something that I was glad, uh, came my way as soon as possible so that we can monitor that as we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and the employee recognition picnic. I missed it, unfortunately. School's back, but I appreciate my colleagues that were able to attend. Thank you, Josh. I'm sure your hot dogs were amazing. They were the last time when you did it here. So I commend you for stepping up to the plate and cooking all of those beef dogs and hamburgers.
Well, we had help. Uh, I had Eddie, uh, from the PD and also Manny Arana, uh, they were helping out. And Tina, Tina was out there helping out as well.
Good. I'm glad to hear that, you know, Tina is definitely back and, um, on the job. So, you know, just like we recognized earlier this afternoon, our newly promoted employees, um, that's what we do here in Southgate. We appreciate and love our employees. And so definitely welcome any community member who wants to work for the city. We have positions available, so please go ahead and apply. And happy Labor Day. This is the last long weekend before the holiday season kicks in. So please be mindful of your driving, especially on Tweedy Boulevard because of the construction. Um, sometimes people are crossing to try to get over to the other side. And I think we just need to be mindful of the businesses that we are affecting also on Tweedy Boulevard, um, to make sure that we are all safe and don't have any slip and falls. Um, and with that, just reminding our community, you know, the area that we live in unfortunately has a lot of toxic particles, particles that are very carcinogen to our health, unfortunately. And, you know, it's sad to hear the losses that we've had in this community because of cancer. You know, nobody goes unscathed. And so definitely, you know, I would ask, you know, that the community take it to heart if they know of anyone who suffers from cancer, to say a prayer because none of us have gone unscathed. And hearing, you know, the issues that, you know, Mr. Morales is going through, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family because it is a difficult time because you don't know. We're here today, we're gone tomorrow. So just a reminder for the community, appreciate your family, those that are around you, and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback on what Councilwoman said, you know, regarding, uh, uh, health issues, you know, let's, let's keep everybody in the prayers because there's a lot of people out there, uh, you know, going through a lot of, uh, health issues. And I think a prayer, it's always, uh, welcome. It doesn't matter who you're praying to, but, uh, let's give our prayers and prayers for the family of that officer that, uh, lost his life. And, uh, I, I also attended the groundbreaking again. I mean, yeah, let's, let's make sure that we are safe out there. Let's try not to go into areas where construction is going on, use the sidewalks that you need, that you need to use because, uh, it, it is a liability issue. So let's do that. And I just want to, you know, take this time to, uh, wish everyone, uh, happy Labor Day. Enjoy your time off. You all can have a day off, so, you know, just take the day off, be with your families, enjoy the day. And again, you know, do your barbecues, but at the same, uh, same time, be safe out there. Okay? And, uh, the ERC Cook Day, Employee Recognition Day, it was well-attended. It was very well-attended. Uh, thank you to all the, uh, executives and supervisors that were helping out there. Um, I was just passing out food, so that's all I was doing. All right. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and I have a happy Labor Day.
Thank you. I was still waiting for my veg- I don't eat meat, so I was waiting for my vegetarian meal and they forgot all about me. That's all right.
You know what? I didn't see you working.
I was in the cleanup crew. I was in the cleanup.
Was there ice cream at least?
I was in the cleanup crew. I signed up for the cleanup crew. I'm sorry. Uh, again, so before the audience portion started, I, I made the announcement that when people come to the council meetings, uh, most of the times there are people who've never been here before and they're not familiar with the, the laws. And I can certainly appreciate that. And you can come in with the most serious of issues, and we want to address it, but a law, it's known the Brown Act prohibits us from engaging in, in a decision-making. We could be seriously violating the law and the city could be fined and we can face sanctions as individuals. And as passionate as we might be about what you're bringing forward, the law does not let us engage in that. And I want to apologize if that is a misunderstanding out there. But again, I want to, I want to reiterate that. Um, so again, I want to apologize for that confusion. Um, so the Southern California Edison, the lights that we have here in Southgate are over 90 years old, and they do not belong to the City of Southgate. They're Southern California Edison. And, um, when there are issues, there are some minor things that our staff can address, and they do a very good job of addressing those. But some of the major issues, I want you to think about it. These are 90-year-old lights and parts for them are no longer available. It's like having an old car and, you know, having a noise being made and you go to a mechanic and they say, oh, you need this. And you say, well, what is that? They don't make that part anymore, so they have to search and hopefully they can find the part. This is the same thing. Southern California Edison is working diligently, trying to find the part that is causing the issue, but it's out of our staff's control. But it's frustrating. So during the last, uh, you know, 20 years, and again, all, all of us who've been here, but both Marie and I have been here for about 20 years, these are issues we've been trying to address with Southern California Edison for the longest, longest time. Fortunately, a few years back, there were grants available that allowed us to change, uh, forget the percentages, is it about 45%? Uh, Mr. Cervantes, 45% of the streetlights have been converted to LED?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm still having a good memory there. But yeah, uh, about 45% of our streetlights have been converted to LED. And we are actually in discussion, uh, with Southern California Edison to see if there's to see if there's something we can do. And there's, I don't want to say too much about it because it's, we don't know if it's going to happen or not, but we're considering a pilot program that might be able to address these issues. But again, to the people who are out there in the dark, my biggest concern about this is that pretty soon, we're going to reach that time of year where it gets dark earlier. And I don't want children out on the streets when the street are dark. So we really need to put pressure on Southern California Edison to do what it has to do. I've reached out to one of their representatives. I can assure you, they're very apologetic. They really want to address it, but they just cannot find that part that they need. But they're doing their very best. And I know that sometimes when you're reading social media, you're reading things from people who have no idea what they're talking about. But it's a good attack. It's a good thing to attack people, and they just don't have a clue as to what is causing this. But our staff, I applaud them for their efforts. I applaud our city manager reaching out to Southern California Edison, trying to address this. But we all live here, and we all suffer the same darkness as you do. We touched on the Tweedy Mile issue. That project has taken about 10 years because of the funding that is needed to do the work. And a couple of things that you have to consider. The funding for it comes from the gas tax. And as the years go by, you have more and more people driving hybrids and more and more people driving electric vehicles. So they're not contributing to the gas tax. So the rest of us that are still pumping gasoline, our gasoline prices are high because of the taxes we have to pay. And we're contributing to that fund that the entire state of California benefits from. And so all the cities across the state of California are bidding for the same dollars. And so the funds are very slow in coming. And this is why this particular project has taken about 10 years to get underway. But we have, and I've asked the city director of Public Works to kind of sort of put together a, like a presentation of all the streets that we've actually worked on. Because they're not just sitting around in an office hoping and praying that, you know, money comes in. They've actually been doing a lot of streets here in the city of Southgate. And I think at some point, instead of being critical, we need to acknowledge their efforts, and they do a very good job with that. But the point I wanted to cover, just as important, is that we have a lot of local mom-and-pop shops on Tweedy Boulevard who may suffer because people are going to be afraid to go out there. I want to encourage you, please don't be afraid. Go out there and support those shops, even though they're under the construction issues. It's going to be an impact to them. You got the holidays coming. They're going to need a lot of support to stay in business. And I would hate that our fear of going out there and shopping is going to cause some hardships for some of those families that are out there. So, you know, I'll be making postings on social media. I hope the city can do the same thing to kind of remind people that even though construction is going on, those businesses need your support. So please support those local mom-and-pop shops. And finally, Jorge Morales is like a brother to me. I've known that man for over 20 years. And I was devastated when I found out that he had been, he was at a meeting, and he was rushed to the hospital. And it was determined that he had some growth in the brain. And they did an immediate, I guess, biopsy. They did some testing, and they found out that there was cancer. And that is something that scares the bejigs out of me. And I feel for the family. He's got two wonderful little kids that love him, you know, to death. And I went to go visit him, and he was in very good spirits. He was feeling really positive. He had surgery yesterday in the morning. We had a prayer meeting, right? It was at Sunday night? And there were over 120 people that joined in on Zoom to pray with him and his family for the best outcome. And again, as I've known Jorge for years, you can see the fear in his face, you know? You can see how this hurts. And I know that our councilwoman also went through cancer some time back. And the miracles of science and the miracles of, you know, those of us that believe in God are very strong. And he's a very spiritual man, and I hope that we can continue to pray for him and his family and all those that are suffering from cancer because they're very, too many people. I've lost two aunts in the last couple of years to cancer, and it hurts people in many, many ways. Okay, before we go into the call session, let's just take five minutes. Is that okay? Okay, so we'll be back in five minutes.
Consent calendar? Consent calendar is next.
Consent, you want to do that or you want to do the...
That's good. Oh, up to you.
Because then we just have one more item after that. So let's just take five. We've been here a long time. We'll be back in five. All right. Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to speak on any of these items? Please step forward and once again, put a line where we don't get confused. Okay, you're good. All righty then, I'm going to close that portion.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can make a correction. It's also item number 13.
Yeah, that's the...
I only said through 12, it's also 13.
It has the minutes from the last meeting. Well, I'll open it up again in case you want to talk about that. They're still good, okay. All right, seeing no one step forward, okay. Emails on these items?
We have none.
Okay, all right, let's bring it back.
Items one through 13.
Yeah. Okay, we have motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Dado?
I will say two through 13, yes. Number one, excuse me, is that the one, the one with the urban orchard? Yeah. I will recuse myself, and that's due to the proximity to my domicile. All right? Okay. We got that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think we forgot a very important event that the city's having this week. And that is the State of the City, which is happening on Thursday, August 29. How could we have forgotten such an important date? No, no, no.
You know, I think...
We just want to make sure that the community is aware. Please come down. What time is it?
It's at noon, right?
I think signups, doors open at 11:30. The Chambers website is where you can get tickets or sign up to attend.
Okay, yeah. And it's going to be taped and all that other good stuff, right? It's going to be available at some point. So, yeah. Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, just, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's item number 10 as well as a notice of completion for the urban orchard.
Is that number 10 too?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Just so you're aware.
Oh, it was on the, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I'm recusing myself on that one as well. Yeah. Thank you so much. You guys have no idea just how difficult this week has been for me because of Jorge's situation. He's like a brother to me. And it's been real, real rough on me and my family. He's a good man. So anyhow, okay, let's go to the warrants.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I want to ask our Public Works Director a question. And you'll let me know if I'm off topic. So this past weekend, on my street, we got the brown water. So city employees came out and they started flushing the fire hydrant. All of this water was just being leaked. So I asked myself, what can we do? So instead of letting the water flush, let it flush, but collect that water and use it to irrigate, you know, our lawns. Because it's not harmful. It's just that the sediment is basically picked up. So I'm bringing it to you and see if that's something that we can consider. So that, my second question was, who's paying for this water? Well, the city is. So instead of letting it go to waste, you know, collecting it and then distributing in our medians or, you know, along the residential areas where the fire hydrants are being flushed, just in a way of conserving water. Because I know that that's what the state is going to be mandating, that, you know, we conserve water. So thinking outside the box, I did ask one of the members, a city employee who works in the, I didn't get his name, but I mentioned it to him, and he goes, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. He says, but I think the vehicle is very expensive. So I said, well, let's look into it.
You know, Mr. City Manager, I know you want to jump in there, and I'll let you do that. But during the time that we had the drought discussions going on before your...
Before me coming on council.
I brought that same issue up, and they actually had numbers. They said, you know, we had thought about that before, but the vehicles are extremely expensive. It'll be more costly to do that. And my thinking was just like the councilwoman's, but we have a drought. You know, even though it might cost us a little bit, is there any way that we can still get the water? But anyhow, but, yeah.
I was going to say, just in the interest of the way the agenda is structured, we can take that idea. I don't think your ideas are all wet, to use a term.
Or all dry.
Yeah, that's right.
They got a little bit of salsa in there.
There's a humid drought here. Is this, keep this going?
Is there any city out there looking for a city manager? The one might be available soon.
Enjoy the veal. But anyways, we've got the opportunity here to take your idea and take a look at it. And maybe it's the mayor's idea as well. We'll give you both credit, but we'll check into that. And I think we also have to vote on the consent calendar. Did that ever-
Yes, we already did.
You did. I missed that. Thank you. We're moving.
Do we know how many gallons of water are released when we do the flushings on average?
I don't have that right off the top of my head, but I will provide that information to you.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a lot of water.
More than a gallon.
And that's why I think my concern-
Less than a notion.
Was, yes. Thank you.
All righty then. Okay. Item number 14, I pass that over onto you.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for August 27, 2024. Grand total is $5,516,051.58.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to any member here in the audience who would like to have discussion on the warrant register. No? We're good? All right. Any emails on this?
We have none.
None? All right. What would council's wishes be?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. You got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second.
In memory of-
In memory of the officer that was mentioned by the chief, and with continued prayers for Jorge and everybody suffering from cancer.
Yes, amen.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Hey, we have the gavel.